Is here, we will call this meeting in order. Councilman Woods, would you give us an invocation?
Oh grace, amen for Father, we once again gather together, Lord. We are gathered together with your blessings. Father, we partake of this meeting, Lord, let us continue, Lord, to put our minds together. Let it work hand in hand to improve our county. And Father, also during this time, we have to heal the land. The people not only in America, Lord, but in Ukraine and surrounding area, Lord, we have to continue, Lord, to strengthen them and some way, somehow establish peace. Father God, whether in your son Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. At this time, before we get started, I think I'd like to address the community as to a recent news article about a firearm ordinance violation that I was involved with. Like a lot of folks in Marlboro County, I carry a handgun and I accidentally left it in a carry-on bag. And I was, and it was discovered by the TSA at Myrtle Beach Airport Security when I was flying to Myrtle, Miami. And I was just as surprised, or even more surprised, to see that it was in the bag than the TSA guy was. And it was dealt with and I was charged with a ordinance violation, a misdemeanor of a firearm in a restricted area. And I have to go to magistrate court in Myrtle Beach, in Ori County, and I'm hoping for a favorable outcome. So that was the extent of that, and sorry for any embarrassment I might have brought upon the council, but I can, I can promise you, it was a learning experience for me. And please be careful, know what's in your bag when, when you go traveling. It was a very unpleasant experience, but they, they do their job and they take it very seriously, and we are definitely in safe hands, I can say that. Up next is the approval of agenda items. Do we have a motion to approve?
To move.
Second, all in favor? Shoot right here. We have the approval of minutes and we'll first take the regular council meeting from February 8th.
Move it, Seth.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor of approving the regular council minutes? Okay, the called council meeting minutes approval?
Motion approved.
Second, all in favor? Okay. Moving to old business, it's not on the agenda, but I had told Councilman Johnson I would seek outside counsel on the, the action for the vice chair vote. And what I found was a call to action for a vote was at hand, and this, I sought out counsel from Harry Eastwood Jr., the, the past counsel attorney. A call to action for a vote was at hand for the election of the vice chairman, and motion in a second was made, and even though there was a lot of disorder during this time, the vote had been called for, the voter intent was evident, and the vote was finalized. And if, if anyone has any more thoughts on that, you may have to seek your own counsel on that, but.
I would say instead of the word disorder, unradious is the most appropriate term. There wasn't a lot of disorder, there was some unradious for the vote, but I accept the opinion that it came without, and said that was disorder, that was unradious.
Okay, we'll, we'll make note of that, and thank you, Dr. Johnson. Moving to new business, Ms. Munnell, it's the resolution 3-22-01, a resolution designated the month of April as the South Carolina Fair Housing Month for 2022.
Mr. Chairman, this is something that's done every year, and it just basically, and I'll read it, it's very brief. The county of Marlboro desires that all its citizens be afforded the opportunity to obtain decent, safe, and sound living environment, whereas the county of Marlboro rejects discrimination on the basis of race, religion, color, sex, national origin, disability, or familiar status in the sale, rental, or provision of other housing services. And whereas the state of South Carolina enacted the South Carolina Fair Housing Law in 1998, whereas April is recognized nationally as a fair housing month, now therefore be it resolved that county of Marlboro does designate April 22nd as fair housing month. And y'all usually do this every year.
Anyone have any questions? Mr. Munnell?
If, and I know we do this every year, but I know during this, this time of the year with so many people, it's so hard to find, it's hard to state, if they're found that they are being discriminated against, do they come to us, do they go to the housing authority, do they file a grievance with, with the landlord?
I think there's, and I'll find out, but I think there's a state board that, that you go to and they investigate those things. I'll make a note.
So other words, we just recognizing it?
That's right.
Okay, all in favor of resolution?
Motion.
Three?
You need a motion.
What?
You need a motion.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we do need a motion. We need to make a motion. Two, I'm afraid, and the second. All right, all in favor of resolution 3-22-01? Okay, moving down to resolution 3-22-02, South Carolina Department of Commerce Rural Initiative Grant for Partial Demolition of an Improvement Sioux Delta Site. Ms. Munnell?
Mr. Chairman, I'll stand up, it might be easier. I put a little, a picture up there for you.
So we're, we're happy that we're making progress with the Delta site. You know, we've, we've been languishing, anguishing, lagging for five years now trying to get the environmental part done. And so we're at a point now that we can begin actually doing things that you can see. And so the Department of Commerce, we've been able to obtain grant funds from them, almost $5 million over the last few years, and we're using a, a big part of this to fund the spec building that we'll talk about next, but the other part is for this, this project at Delta. And so the grant is for $1.8 million, and the county has to match it one to one. The good thing is that they will allow us to use all the money we've spent over the past four years as part of the match, and that comes to about $700,000. So that gives us a good head start, and we've had this in the budget now for two years, maybe three years, and it's just rolls because we couldn't do anything until we get the other environmental stuff done. So the more interesting part of it is, if you look at this map, and some of y'all have been out there, and we'll definitely do another tour once we get things going on, the, the pink parts, particularly the part on the right-hand side, if you're looking at it, will be taken down to the slab. Now, why to the slab? If you start digging the slab up, then you've got to do more environmental, and we've done some environmental, but the thought is that when somebody's ready to build there, then you'll attack that at that time. The pink part in the, on the left side of the complex is in between green, we hope to be able to just kind of hollow that out, and that'll allow us to save the front. When you look at the, you know, the front of Delta that you've seen in all your lives, we'll be able to save that with that little circle and all, and turn that into warehouse space. The green near the bottom of the page, we've done a significant amount of work on already, which we also can claim in the match. We've made sure the roof is, is tight, we've got an electrical lighting and doors put on it, and we have people calling us every other week wanting to rent warehouse space. So the, the goal is to put somebody in there that'll invest a lot of money and hire a bunch of people. But, you know, the, the good thing is, once it's ready, you could use it for temporary warehouse space, just to have somebody in there, because that's always important. So what we ask for tonight is we need a letter of support, and I felt like this would be a good way to update you all on what's going on and show that some actual progress is happening. We put out for proposals for bids for the demolition, Ms. Carebo's had a lot of interest, and that date is 25th for, and we're really interested to see what comes, because there will be a wide range of, of prices, we feel like, but they've, they've met on site with contractors and that sort of thing. We hope to be able to save the bricks from the demolition to grind it up and use it in, in our public works, even grind it so fine to use on roads. And they're yellow, so we'd have yellow brick roads potentially, but we'll wait to see if, if the bids say that you can do that. So I can, I can attempt to answer any questions. You also have, when you can't sleep at night, you can read this part, and it'll help you, it's just the wording for the grant.
Yes, sir.
The way you want to treat them, we've already dealt with all of them, is that empty?
It's not empty. The only, the only issues that have been identified for us is, if you look down on the bottom left-hand corner where it says Google Earth, you see that water standing there? There's an old pond there that has to be closed off, and they're allowing us just to cover it over, but there's no pressure to do that right now. There's nothing, there's nothing leaking out of the site going, you know, anywhere or hurting anybody. So that's been part of our whole voluntary closure plan that was completed several years ago, where they tell you what you have to do. There are alligators in the big ponds, so if that is.
That, that you have retainers of industrial spec, Bill, would you do a short-term lease? So if you had somebody there, we could show it and still?
Well, there is a, a tremendous need for third-party warehousing, for warehousing on a short-term basis. So the thought is to have that potentially where it could be renovated and made into that, and the county could either contract the operation or take short-term leases themselves and generate revenue for the county. You know, I think that the, the bottom, the bottom green, you know, is where you want to get some jobs in there, but the middle green could, middle pink could be used in that way, or, or develop just like the rest of them.
Any other question? So we need a motion for a letter of support for a resolution?
Well, there's a resolution in here, if you want me to, I can read it real quick. And it's just, I have to put my glasses back on, sorry. A resolution supporting Marlboro County's application for rural initiative grant funds from the South Carolina Department of Commerce to be used for the partial demolition of the Delta site and the improvement of the remaining viable structures and property. Whereas, South Carolina Department of Commerce has available grant funds through rural initiative allocations that are to be used to further economic development efforts in rural counties, and whereas Marlboro County, as a part of its economic development strategies, has acquired and begun the improvement of the former Delta Mill site with the goal of developing additional manufacturing and distribution space to attract new jobs and capital investment to the county, and whereas the county is requesting $1.8 million from Commerce to fund the project, with the county providing an equal match amount to fund the project. Whereas, these matching funds include expenses already incurred by the county, as well as other funds sourced from the county's economic development funds as previously approved in the current year operating budget. And whereas, this grant, if awarded, shall become effective as of the date of the award. Now therefore be it resolved by the county council of Marlboro County, South Carolina, that the here and above described grant will shall be accepted. Be it further resolved that the county administrator is hereby authorized to sign and administer said application on behalf of the county of Marlboro County, South Carolina.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve resolution 032202.
Second, all in favor? All right. Moving to information regarding groundbreaking for industrial spec building.
Mr. Chairman, another good news item, the ground, they've started to turn dirt at the industrial park for the speculated building. Again, this was funded by the state with a much less match from the county, so that's all been done. What we want to do is to have a groundbreaking ceremony, to, you know, to go out and make photographs, let people see that the county council is proactive in trying to attract new industry and jobs here in the county. So tentative, we have down Tuesday, the 22nd of March, make sure you all get an email with that. We're waiting on a couple of things to confirm, because we have partners in this, you know, as well, so I'll send something out. I just want to try to, to show the progress we're making in that area.
Okay, so no action needed on that?
No, sir, just information.
Moving to appointments to boards and commissions. We have the county council subcommittees set up, I think they're in the packet, is that right, Ron?
Yes, sir.
And we will be making a, a few changes to this, and I'll, I'll promise I'll have this formed up by tomorrow. But if y'all want to take a preliminary look at it, I think it's about the same as... Nothing's really changed on this, but we will be forming this up by tomorrow. Do we have consideration, nominations for Ms. Ella Reese Henson, as chair of the Marlboro County Library Board through 2023?
Mr. Chairman, the, the way the library ordinance reads, they, they, the library board is appointed by the council, and then they come to council with their nomination for the chairman. Ms. Henson is the existing chairman, she's still within her, there's no term limits there, and they have written us a letter requesting that y'all consider reappointing her.
Okay. So do we have a motion for the, for, I guess, re-electing her? Okay, is there a second? All in favor? All right, moving now to the reports. Wes Park, with finance report?
Mr. Chairman, council members, Mr. Munnell, you have before you the report for the eight months ended February 28th, 2022. Revenue is through that period, $9,424,063. In comparison with the prior year, that amount was $8,831,915,000, so it's about $600,000 greater at this, at this junction. General fund expenditures through February 28th, 2022 totaled $7,525,309 of a $12,825,594 budget, or 58.67% of budget year-to-date. Expenditures for the same eight months ending in 2021 totaled $7,431,747. In summary, income is higher due to increases in state and local tax revenues, and expenditures are slightly higher for the same period. Of course, we, we know that shortly, over the next three months, we'll be working through the budgetary process, and just want to make a few comments about, about that. I, I know that we'll, we'll see some growth in revenue, but obviously the concern is, will that be enough to offset the growth in expenditures? Of course, we've, we've seen a, a rate of inflation that's higher than we've seen in the last 40 years, so we're already about 7% inflation for the prior year. We've got concerns, obviously, with some of the uncertainties, there's issues with availability of goods and materials, services. We know that there's going to be increased cost, we've got, you know, challenges really with, you know, with workforce in terms of, you know, pressure for higher compensation. We've seen some things already in benefit sides. The, the state has, well, PIB has announced that healthcare costs are going to be increasing 18% within the state plan. Now, we're pool-rated, so our increase could be slightly more, could be slightly less, but that's a pretty significant increase. We've seen a number of things that have been frozen over the, the last couple of years, but now that, that freeze in terms of increases in cost have, have really no longer in place. We also are going to see a 1% increase in the retirement cost, and that's, that's a pretty significant number. And then we're obviously looking at some of the other elements that are going to be needed, such as technology updating, refreshing, and of course, we've got the recreation project and coming to a conclusion on exactly what type of project we can accomplish in that regard. So a number of things, I'm sure we're going to have a lot of great discussion over the next two or three months, so I don't know if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those at this time.
You said 18%?
18% healthcare costs for the employer share.
What was, do we know kind of last year, what it was about?
The last year, it was, it was pretty much flat.
Was it?
Yeah, and I think part of what's happened, we've seen scenarios where they've held cost down, they've delayed the increase. Unfortunately, in the upcoming year, we're going to see, I think, a number of things where those freezes of cost are no longer going to be the, the case.
I think family coverage is, what, $1,100 or $1,300?
Yeah, I think it's like.
The part the county pays and.
Yeah, significant.
Yeah, so this, if it's $1,300, that's $234 a month that the county, you know, will have to look at. And, you know, in a lot of cases, at least in my opinion, the state sometimes will freeze something for a year and then hit you hard in two years. It would be, it would have been better if it, you know, went along, but it's just one of the things we're going to have to deal with.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question, but I would like the council to consider having some type of workshop for the council to go over the financial report, or maybe a quarterly workshop. So you, because it's hard to do, I understand it's hard to do month by month, you know, it's plain to me for us to just look at the expenditures and see, but if we can have some type of workshop, you know, educating and letting us know what's going on with the finance.
Can we, can we look into?
Sure, absolutely, be glad to do that.
Okay. But you think like a quarterly? I think that'd be reasonable.
Well, one good thing is with, if you activate these committees and know they're going to be active, that also gives you a venue to hear updates as well, so.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Park. Administrator's report, Ron?
Mr. Chairman, as we always do, we recognize employee anniversaries that are greater than five years, and this month we have a few. Montrina Kelly with five years, Vanessa Doughty with 12, Randy Ritter with seven years, Ron Covington with 28 years, Victor Quirk with five years, Miss Bobby Sue Latham with 18 years, Ron Bostic with 19 years, Kevin Thomas with 33 years, and Bobby Greens with seven years. So if you see these folks, congratulate them on their longevity in the county organization. As far as upcoming events, a reminder again that you have to fill out your statement of economic interest form before the end of March, March 30th, we'll send an email out as well. They will fine you $100 a day if it's late, so it's important to get that in. For those of you who, I don't know, some of y'all may have not have done it yet, we can show you if there's an issue. We talked about spec building, I put that on here so you have it as a reminder, we'll tie that, that date down here tomorrow or the next, next day at the latest. Moving into economic development, we talked about Delta. We did have a very productive, I thought, breakfast committee meeting of the partnership this morning, and it was a good group, and the committee is structured to have a lot of industry manufacturing business representation on it. And where that, that effort had gone in the past was more of bureaucrats like myself or school district or tech college kind of telling these folks what we're going to train people for, instead of the people on the ground trying to hire people saying what they need. And so we had a really good discussion, and it focused around the need to have a Marlboro County-focused effort to understand what's needed by these industries. There are a lot of different agencies doing the same thing, but from the perspective of the folks in the industries, they're bombarded with these folks and this information, that they would like to have, you know, some central coordination of what's real, what do I, you know, you need to read this, or send something out that everybody needs to look at. So that was really a consensus there about that, so that's a good thing. One thing that, that I brought to them was the idea of doing a survey of just the, you know, the business industry in the county to help determine what their needs are as far as training, as far as trying to publicize jobs that are available, which is something, you know, I told them council was very interested in, and all of that, and that was well received. One committee member had an example of a survey that we can use and adapt to ours that helps greatly, so that was a good thing. I did tell them and show them our ideas that have come up about the digital sign and maybe having a website with the jobs available in the county. Every one of the industries that were there had available jobs they cannot find people to fill. And I, you know, I told them from our side, we hear there are no jobs, so it's like, we've got to fill this gap. And so the thought is to, you know, not just advertise, you know, with a visual thing like a sign, but lead them to a website that we post, all these folks agree that we post jobs on there. And so the next move for the county, for the committee is to try to figure out, well, how do we sort these out on the website so it's not complicated? You know, folks need something they can go at a glance, and maybe you group it by, you know, entry-level jobs, or starting jobs, or then, you know, on down. But very active discussion about that, and going to move forward with that and meet monthly to talk about these things. It's difficult to get people to come to a meeting like that, and the fact that we had three industries and a utility come to that and speak up was a very positive thing. And so that, that's important, and then we'll also try to, to figure out how we're going to support, provide staff support for that function out of the partnership. You know, the existing industry, taking care of existing industry is an important function. You know, oftentimes, economic development stuff is focused on new only, you've got to keep what you have as well. And now it ties into connecting our citizens who need jobs with people that have jobs. So we have another committee meeting Thursday of the infrastructure committee, sites, buildings, and infrastructure committee, and that's generally the heads of like Marlboro Electric, Marlboro Water, Railroad, and it's more of a meat and potatoes kind of meeting, and that's to just talk about spec building, where we are, and a couple of technical things about that, and get their advice on that. So really report on that once we have that. As far as the administrative report, the recre, with regards to the recreation assessment, you know, which is a hot topic, the consultants are finalizing their presentation of findings and recommendations with the goal of meeting before the end of the month. So I know that there've been a lot of call meetings, but this is important, and, and I'll work with the chairman to find a date that works for everyone. And the, what I push into them is, you know, we need that to be, you know, here's what we heard, here's what we saw, here's what our advice is, here's the different routes you can go with actionable items. In some cases, they will write the final report and then give you the final report, and I felt like it would be better to have that meeting so you could have some interaction before they write the final report, because the final report will come, will, will become what you use to go after grants and things like that. So when they present, and if you all have a challenge to them, or you think something else needs to be looked at, it gives us time to, for them to, you know, develop that. Also, I put on your desk, you know, we had an executive session about legal and contractual matters related to this, so I gave you an update there, a confidential update, so we're all, we're all working to try to tie down the things we talked about. In a similar vein, you know, with regards to the Eastside School Project, Chairman Nigley did send a letter to the school district based on their action last, at the last meeting, and the letter basically expressed the aligned efforts of the ESPAA and Marlboro County to further assess that property and determine what the best use is. You know, and so a joint effort, and so we don't repeat things or have redundancy there with ESPAA. I did meet at length today with the chairman of that group, Mr. Johnakin, after the committee meeting, and about next steps, and we seem to be in alignment about, you know, what he feels like we ought to do next, and that's his baby, he's very passionate about it, as y'all know, and so next week, the thought is to have a, a committee meeting with, you know, the chairmen of the schools and all this and that, and try to determine who we need to get technically to go in and look at things like roofs and things like that, not repeat what they've already done, but maybe update it because of the prices on things 90 days ago have changed. So I feel good about that, particularly after meeting with Mr. Johnakin today, so I wanted to give you that update.
The school board meeting last night, they had us on the agenda for, for this topic.
Mr. Chairman can probably give a better report. I, I timed out at about 2:15 or something, two hours waiting for.
Yeah, and they did, they gave us permission to, to utilize the building, the interior building, the interior property, and it's, you know, give any type of assessment that we need, and they're looking forward to that. that we need, and, and they're looking forward to the, you know, being a part of, of, of us, you know?
First of all, you're in at that meeting, thank you.
Um, go ahead.
Oh, minute, Mr. Mullen, excuse me.
You have something on that?
Well, I just, uh, on the East Side project, everything that we, we're doing, I know it takes time, um, administrator, but the reports that we need back, um, by the, our next meeting, our next board meeting, I would like for results, the findings of those reports to be shared with council. If we need, whatever engineer we need to bring in, you know, to nip it in the bud or even carry it on down the road, you know? But in thirty days, our next board meeting, they should be able to, to tell us what finances they're able to achieve, we should be able to tell them what we're gonna do, tell the school board what we're gonna do, and, um, there's no reason to kick it down the road further than that.
Well, we'll do our best. It's, um, getting consultants and contractors to do things is not that easy, but I think we'll start with the low hanging fruit, like a roof, that sort of thing, but we'll keep y'all informed on every step of the way.
The way I understand it, there's mold, there's, there's, there's all kind of stuff out there, all that stuff can be looked at within thirty days. It doesn't take, uh, another ninety days to get a report back to say that we can utilize this property or we cannot utilize this property. The, what we're working with, and we all know that it's limited, uh, funds for a limited time, so we need to be moving. We don't need to be waiting on a, another report, we're waiting on the recreation report, you know, we don't, this part we can move on.
Well, I'm at the mercy of who I get to do it, so I'll make sure you know what's going on, so it won't be me, but, um, some things I think can be accomplished, like a roof or a structural thing, I think environmental things like a mold thing, maybe not, but, um, again, I'll keep y'all informed, so...
When you say roof, are you insinuating that the county is looking at the roof? Or...
I, I, I'm not...
Because the East Side portion, the way I understand it, that's East Side portion.
Well, maybe there needs to be a...
The property.
Maybe y'all need to have a meeting and tell me what you want me to do, because there seems to be a lot of different things, and that'll, and that'll help us go faster.
Yeah, well, let's have that meeting, let's set up the committee, and, uh, Mr. Chairman, let's set up the committee, I feel like a little boy for some reason, I think you...
Your seat will raise up. It'll take thirty days, but we'll get it up.
But, we'll walk, okay, let's set up the committee and let's get busy with it, you know?
Well, I think, I think the challenge of the committee is to get, what you're going towards, is everybody in the room to say, well, who's doing this and who's doing that? That's the kind of thing that'll slow me down. If you say wrong, go figure out about the roof, I'll go find, that's one we probably can do quickly, but you make a good point, so...
We'll, we'll get together in a minute.
You make, you make a good point there. We could, we could waste forty-five days figuring out who's gonna do what. We, we could easily waste time figuring out whose responsibility is, we could figure that out. Okay, um, next item is, you know, kind of a, a no-brainer, but we're having tremendous issues like everybody else with supply chain. You know, from our sign that we're on today will be another four or six weeks, a piece of playground, a merry-go-round in a slide to be bought for Brightsford Park. The, the people we found and the one we liked and the price that was right, October, for a piece of plastic. Um, the spec building was delayed in starting by thirty, forty-five days because he couldn't find roofing material, and then he got that, and then he couldn't find the screws he needed to screw it down. And of course, you know, today, particularly, you know, things escalated with the Ukraine, and so now fuel costs are already big, and it's just, you know, it's just gonna get worse. And, um, it, it's, it's very frustrating for us, but it, it sure shows that, uh, that we are very dependent on foreign manufacturing, I mean, I don't know how else to put it. So, we're working through that, um, but it is, it is very much a challenge. Uh, and then the last item I had on here were the, the district, redistricting maps, all that's, the ordinance you approve and the maps are with the state agency, who will then take the draft off and all of that, and then transmit that to the appropriate agencies. I have a meeting scheduled for Thursday at ten AM, and any of y'all are welcome to join if you'd like, with, um, with the election commission, with Ms. Moses and Ms. Hagan and Christina, the associate or assistant director, just to see what they need, and, um, because I know council has a strong opinion that we need to make sure that people are educated on the changes and, and, um, that the changes get on the books, for lack of a better word. So, we proactively did that to try to, to head that off, because all that's gonna move in a very tight, fast timeline, because I think filings, let me all run in next week or the next week, I mean, it's on.
Sixteen.
Yeah. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
The, the fuel prices, we have them locked in at like a few cent over or whatever Monkey Bay is, or how, how is that, how does that work if it jumps to seven, eight dollars a gallon for fuel?
The fuel is bought off the wax cars, so it's a set price, but, I mean, it's a couple of cents, like you said.
We use the state contracting, state system, where they can go to any station, they have a card and do that, and the state bids it out, which helps because it's on a huge volume of fuel, but, you know, it's eventually gonna get us...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And that's something that Wes and I and all of us are working to see the impact. We're a third of what, we have a third of the year left, and you could easily go calculate what we have left to spend, because sheriff stuff and EMS, you know, it's pretty predictable and how bad that's gonna get us. But I, I don't know anything we can do. I mean, we gotta run, we gotta run deputy cars, and we've got to, uh, we gotta run ambulances and fire trucks.
Thank you, Mr. Mullen. Any more questions? All right, recognition of citizens, uh, first up, we have Franklin Smith. Hey.
Uh, I guess this is my, uh, third or fourth time here concerning the pandemic money that, uh, I'm a former employee of, of the Marlboro County government, and I'm speaking for several other fellows, I put about nine or ten up, I've turned the names in, and we haven't heard any results yet. It's, uh, now the fact that money was a lot of kid I do, two days from, I think a couple days will be a year sometime this month. And we was out there working in the pandemic, uh, in a big way, because guys were getting sick, one guy passed away, several had pneumonia, several had, uh, the COVID. I received the COVID and took it home to the family. My wife hasn't been the same since, she can't even taste no more. So, I'm up here not only for myself, but it's something that we were right to deserve, and, uh, I'm clearly frustrated now that it's taken me this long, and hopefully y'all can come to some kind of consideration that we was, we are tight-fitting people and you guys are leaders here, and I think it's only fair to show your leadership by looking out for your citizens and people that vote to help you getting over. It's all about the peoples, I thought, in this business here, but, uh, I'm only speaking that not only for myself, for my coworker who was out there fighting too long with that thing, a lot of people getting sick. We consider essential worker at that particular time. Uh, hopefully I can get some news, I hadn't heard any feedback or anything, but I know one thing is getting me frustrated, and I don't know, uh, the trips he's making here, I wanna know what's going on with it. He says, what's my time coming up here to where I should go to another direction here, because I hadn't getting any results. I'm, I'm not getting any whatsoever, so, uh, I would like to thank that on behalf of everybody that, uh, affiliate with me. I certainly appreciate it, I can get something done concerning this pandemic money. Thank you very much.
Next is Ms. Pearlie Lawson.
I just do this, you got some fanatic down that side, just want you to know. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Chairman, council members, administrators, administrator, ladies and gentlemen, I'm here to address two points and make one comment. First, I want to commend the council and the body, the whole entire body, for providing the opportunity for the community to view the maps and providing the benchmark comparison in each district. For those who came out, whether we came to the courthouse or at the library, I do appreciate making it convenient for everyone to see. I don't know who, how many of the people had questions, but if they did, I do appreciate the fact that council members were available. You were also available, Mr. Administrator, and it was very helpful that that information was shared. Yes, as president of NAACP, I did request that, not just for, because I'm president, but because I'm a voter and I'm a citizen, so I'm glad that you did that. Um, I did hear a little something about the fact that there has been, the drafts have been sent. I put on my little minutes here that I will, I'm waiting, I'm sure that there's gonna be a third reading for the approval to take place, and I'm sure that that will be a part of public record when they have been approved.
That's all you got. That's all you got.
And have we had public information? Okay, so I did not, maybe I didn't see it in the paper, maybe I didn't look, but I would like to be sure that I get that public record. I also want to let you know that the state NAACP, State Conference of the NAACP, has filed a lawsuit against the state house for District fifty-four and District fifty-five, because they have found that gerrymandering, packing and cracking has taken place on the state level, and that does affect citizens here in Marlboro County. I stood before this council, making sure that Marlboro County didn't do any packing or cracking, so if I'm this district, so we have to also be sure that the state is not doing packing and cracking. Uh, one other thing that, uh, as a citizen, I want to say to you, Mr. Nigley, I'm very glad that you did address the public with your incident, about the incident that happened on February, in February concerning the king of the firearm. When public officials mess up, uh, when they fall down, we should, or they should provide a public apology, but I do expect that all leaders to be held accountable and ha, hired to a higher standard. Sometimes concerns are just talked about in the dark and are brushed over, and when nothing is said, it sometimes leads to more question and more doubt. So, therefore, as a community, we do not need any more cover-ups. Thank you for bringing this to light, and for all of us, understanding is the key for anything for us to get together in Marlboro County. So, I wanted to make that public statement, because I was concerned, I'm not gonna tell you until I was very much alarmed and concerned. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lawson. Uh, recognition of council members, Mr. Woods?
The, uh, one, two thing that, um, that I wanted to address, um, we know basketball season is over with, uh, it was, um, very successful, uh, commend Dr. Johnson and other coaches staff for, um, representing Marlboro County in a well fashion. I think they came in second place, and Coach Will Johnson, um, lost in the first round of the state, and the other coaches, I think they lost, and, I think they, most of them came in second place, you know, and so we at the county had good representation, uh, on a positive note, on the, on the, somewhat negative note, it is, um, hard for parents, coaches to get their team prepared to play when they get week to week schedule. Um, that's, you know, something that has happened this year, I don't know why, but when coaches, um, their last game is on Thursday, they don't get the schedule for the next week till that Sunday, and they just try to, um, prepare, you know, a week to week schedule, um, it is more easier and, and to fix. You know, we get to sign up, you know, the day of the week you're gonna play, just send a schedule out. It's something that I did for years, um, day one, first game of the January, the third, and, and the last game would be month of first, you know, it's easy to do a schedule. And, um, you always had to know, you know, it, it couldn't be weather or cold or whatever, all game we made at the end of the year, it's a simple fix. Um, hopefully that the baseball and softball, as these sports come up, you know, with, with those in recreation, we'll, we'll look at that part. The one thing that I would love to see us as a council, we have one, maybe two, four to five hundred companies in this county, and Marlboro Corp. is one of them, and we have never, in my sixteen years, met with the Corp. board to see, you know, we got this recreation task, it's the biggest task that we, we gonna have, and we can get, not only the small partners, but we can get in touch, uh, and get on page and meet with the Corp. board and say, look, what can we do? What can y'all do? What can we do together on this task? Because the thing that we're finna build, if everything goes well, it need to be something that we can hang our hat on and, and not even duplicate it. If, say, we're Horsby got this, Horsby got that, we don't need to build something with Horsby got. What we need to build something that, you know, we're near within a hundred mile radius, because when we, wherever this project we're doing come to, come to light, it won't be, it's a flagship, it need be a flagship, and everybody wanna be a part of it, but we need to get everybody a part of before the wagon, not after, everybody wanna jump on the wagon after everything get done. But with, with Corp., and I, I use Corp. as an example, you know, because they're right down the road, they got a great facility, um, their board and, and their leadership has shown that they, they know how to think outside the box, and not only idea-wise, but financial-wise also, minds together, a lot of great minds together can get in and brainstorm, and the thing that may come out of that could be something just as simple, um, because every, every head got ideas, and my idea might not be your idea, but together we might can make a big idea. So, I, I would love for us to try to collaborate with the Corp., um, Mr. Fleming and his board and, um, Mr. Mullin and all board to get in around table unofficially and, um, kick some ideas around. They may have an idea that we might know, and, and, and we can open our eyes to them also. I think that'd be a grand, a grand opportunity in the next thirty-six, yeah, I, I'm gonna let me take that back, soon. I ain't gonna put no time on nothing, so everybody, everybody's scared you busy, but we need to, we love, I would love to see that happen in the next ninety days, if I had to put a time limit on it.
That's a good idea.
I'm good.
You good, Corv? Chicago?
First, first of all, um, let me, uh, say, um, Ms. Bundy, thank you for your service to, to the board and everything that you do, really, I'm really gonna really miss you. I, I was kinda pleased when I walked through the door and saw you, you know, oh, gosh, it's good, you did a good job. Sheriff McMillan?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, um, for everything you've done, taking over a difficult position, and you made it look kinda easy there, you know? I know it's difficult. Is there anything that, uh, you would like to say to the board or anything that you would like, any way we can help you or assist you in any, any manner?
There's always something I'd like to say, sir, that's, uh...
Feel free to do so, I'll use my time, you know, you can do that.
I was just, just a brief update of where we are as an agency and where we are as a county. I always have something to say. I'm never without words, I don't think. It's, no, I'm not there, I'm a grandparent, I tell everybody I'm a grandparent. Um, I, I just like to go through personnel. Last time, I think I spoke with you, we had eight people that we were trying to get into the academy. I can tell you now that six of those people are now at the academy, and we're waiting for the next two to go, so we've been able to really speed up the process to get our people in school. So, we have six now, two will be graduated in a couple of weeks, two more in the following week, then two more after that, so we're really getting them through so we can get, um, staffing right where it needs to be. Right now, we're just two people short of where we're, what we're budgeted for, only two people short of what we're budgeted for, so that's good. As far as equipment and, um, technology, I wanna thank Wes and a few more folk that's been helping us as we've been going through every budget item that we have, and, and we've been able to locate, locate a, a lot of budgeting items that we can reallocate monies for this coming year. Don't wanna lose the money, just wanna reallocate that money, and I think that that money would be able to help us do, um, help us with, with staffing even more, but they've, we found some money that, that we can do other things with as opposed to where it is now. I don't say how much that is, but it's a, a good number. Um, we did receive thirty thousand dollars from a foundation, and I may have sent that to you, and it's, and helps, uh, it will help us do what we want to do with our body cameras. We're in the process of getting new body cams for everybody. I think the last time I talked with you, we were having problems where we didn't have body cams. Uh, the cost of what we've been able to come up with, and Wes is still working on that, but it's, I hope it's finalized if I'm not mistaken, pretty much.
It's gotta be getting close.
Yeah, we, we should be real close, but it is only a seven thousand dollar difference in what we needed and what it is, so I think we're looking good when it comes to body cams. I am supposed to come and ask you... I am supposed to come and ask you, or request your permission for grants, uh, we have some grants. And we just found out yesterday, we kept get, we kept getting kickbacks from the grants we were sending, you know, we found out that we haven't had a grant done here in over six years. And as a result, we were not on the list, and Marlboro wasn't on the list to get certain grants. But that's hopefully has been pretty much rectified, that's been rectified, so we're going forth with some grants, we have three to send, and that we're looking at right now. One has to do with body vests, uh, that's a reimbursement that we'll be able to get, and that's a fifty percent reimbursement. Uh, secondly, uh, and that would be thirty vests, approximately five hundred dollars, so we're talking about thirty, whatever that is, if I did it right, quick, five hundred times thirty, that's fifteen thousand, so it probably costs us about seven thousand dollars, which is not bad. Those vests, most vests are, are good for, uh, life expectancy is about five years for vests, so they're, we're way overdue for new vests, so that, that, that's being done. Next on, we have, um, our radios, um, they're actually outdated. Uh, as of twenty twenty-three, we won't be able to use them at all. Uh, so we're in the process of getting that done, and that's a ninety percent reimbursement, so we're working on that. We will actually be having a, um, a meeting tomorrow, we created, I started, I won't say we created, we, we started a, um, a countywide law enforcement network meeting that we're having monthly now at the sheriff's office, so everybody will, in, in the county normally shows up, state and, and local will show up. And tomorrow, we have some people coming in tomorrow from, um, Highway Safety that will be talking to us about JAG grants and everybody in the community to help us make sure that we can do the best we can to get grants. So that'll be happening tomorrow between ten and twelve at the sheriff's office. Uh, we found out that we were in our process of looking through budgetary items, we came across an item that we were paying, uh, uh, some money for, and we didn't know what it was for, and we found out it was there. It was called WTH, and it has to do with techno, it's a technology piece, but we were using it as a part of our, um, Lawtrack, we have Lawtrack, but a part of Lawtrack is WTH. And we found out that we are paying for it, and so we're going to, it's interfaced now with Lawtrack, but we're going to use it to, to help us do some crime mapping, and so we, the, the software is there, it's never been used, but it's there. So we're going to start using the software to do some crime mapping, and crime mapping for us kind of lets us know that we'll be able to use the CAD system that's in place now, we'll take the CAD system, use the CAD system through crime mapping to help us locate crimes in different areas, to see where we need to focus and put more energies. We talk about where you need police, where, where we need police is where we're having the most problems in. And this crime mapping will help us see that. Now, I, I heard Mr. Mullin said a few minutes ago, he passed you out a map so you could see better what we're talking about. But that's what crime mapping does for us, it allows us to see where the crimes really are. It'll help us put our focus, using heat maps, to help us put our focus on where things are, where we need police at, where the biggest crimes are. And, and so we're going to focus on using that, we can use it also, not for us, but we can do quite a bit with that, quite a bit will be done with that, with WTH, and we're looking forward to doing that. Um, as far as the detention center, um, last time we talked, we were twelve people short. Hmm, yeah, twelve people short at the detention center. As of last week, we've hired five, I know the one has interviewed three more this week. Now, a lot of what I'm saying now has to do with when it comes to us being shored up, when it comes to, to staffing has to do with, and I appreciate this very much, is with you agreeing for us to have the sign-on bonuses, that has helped us a lot. But it's also about a lot of people that left our community and went other places to work are now coming back home, and that's really what I said, and I think we all want that. We want people who've left Marlboro County to come back to Marlboro County and work, and that's who we're hiring. Uh, so we're looking at trying to refill that. Um, I, I can say yesterday, I, I had someone come in from the federal prison, a, a former federal, uh, prison, um, warden come in and do a walkthrough with Warden Thomas yesterday, uh, because we're trying to make sure we're in compliance with, um, what we're trying to get done with the federal, with federal inmates. And so he came in and did a, a walkthrough for us, a complimentary walkthrough, and make sure we're getting where we need to be on that end. And, and he was well pleased with what, what he saw as far as being in compliance. But we are short, obviously, when it comes to staffing. Uh, as, as far as the part that we talked about federal inmates, um, we're at a point now, if I'm not mistaken, we're actually waiting on them to give us the next piece that we need. Uh, thanks to, to Captain Sellers, we've been able to, um, start the process, and we're at a point right now where we're waiting for them to give us the next piece that we need. But we've been assured that once we're in compliance, within six months, we will be housing, uh, other folk. And, and we feel really confident that that's going to happen within this coming year, hopefully by the summer. That's what we're, we're looking for the summer if we can get the parts that we need done. Again, I just want to say thank you for, for your help, for your interest in the sheriff's department, helping, and, and thank you for all that you're able to do for us, to get us where we really want to be. And, um, I know budget time's coming up, and I may be a little frustrating, some folk come budget time, but you don't get what you want unless you ask for it. You know, I don't mind asking.
Well, thank you, you're doing a great job.
Thank you very much.
I had the Councilman Strum, do you have anything?
Only one other question to Ms. Lawson. What district does the suit, uh, that, that NAACP have filed, what district does, how does that affect Marlboro County?
District fifty-four and District fifty-five.
I'm sorry, fifty?
District fifty-four and District fifty-five.
District four?
District fifty-four is, uh, surrounds Marlboro County. However, in District fifty-five, McCall has been cut out of District fifty-four, as you were aware of that, sir.
Whole county, go, drawn on again.
Right, you were aware of that, right? So I'm just saying that, um, and it parts Clayo not in District fifty-four. Um, one side of Clayo is like District fifty-four, one side is District fifty-five, but now, Mr., it's not all Clayo in District fifty-five now? Have you seen the map?
No, I don't.
Okay, I've seen the map, have you seen the map?
I think everything in the county is in fifty-four except for a strip that comes over and catches McCall.
Right, and I saw, I've seen the map, I don't want to share those maps with you, those are state house maps. Uh, but it is, it's like eighty-three, all of eighty-three, and it makes a circle there, and it entails, from my looking, it tells all of McCall. And one of the things when I came to council is not to crack up a whole community, not to crack up cities and, and, as far as the streets, try to combine, and that's one of the things I just believe in. If we are going to be Marlboro County, um, don't put me in a district where my representation is not here to, to hear me. And, yes, but if Marlboro County is going to be Marlboro County, we don't have to be a whole county. We can't live in isolation, we can't think, oh, we're just over here by ourselves. That's not Marlboro County. And in order for us to be fair, personally, to be fair, we need all of us working together from Marlboro County. That's, that's what I say. I believe in families, no matter what, I may not agree with Mr. interview on any issue, but when it comes down to business, we're going to have to all say for this right, we want to be fair. As long as it's doing decent and in order, I'm okay for that, and I do believe in being fair. Thank you.
Councilman Sting?
Um, I guess, say, Sheriff, I, I watch my, I want to say Chief, but, uh, you know, if I saw you here for so many years, well, thank you for the job that you're doing and Captain, uh, whenever he spoke out, just thank y'all for, for, you know, uh, as, as, you know, as monies get higher, gas gets higher, this gets higher, uh, scrap gets higher, you know, there's all kinds of things going on, so, you know, I just thank y'all for the job you're doing, uh, like I said, so, just, just want to say thank you. Ms. Bundy, thank you for, uh, for what you've done, and, uh, well wishes on your next endeavor. Um, just to say, uh, for the OY Road project, uh, had both landowners, uh, uh, in the room with DHEC last week, uh, to, uh, so there's, to try to get some next steps, you know, it's, so it's always an ongoing product, process, but we did get, finally get both of those in the, in the room for about an hour and a half with DHEC, so, uh, they know the next steps they have to, to take, uh, it's up to them to take the next step, so we are still trying to push it, and hopefully, uh, they know that, they know they're on a timeline to try to do it, and so, uh, hopefully we'll have some more information right shortly on that, so, uh, but, uh, um, it is moving, it's always, you say moving, I mean, I can, moving like, hopefully it moves faster than the Delta Project, but, uh, uh, you know, it seems like it's on, right on the track, but it is good news to, uh, finally be able to, uh, I've been looking forward to seeing something go on up there, and, you know, it's a, just a block that when you come into the county, a lot of beach traffic, you know, you see it, and you, you see it in its heyday, and then you, you see where it is now, so like I said, I think we'd, uh, we'd just do, you know, the taking it down and cleaning it up, just, uh, it's kind of what we, will be a good, a good, uh, visual coming straight into the county, and so, uh, whatever, like I said, we're glad, hopefully, uh, I see, uh, San Diego still, uh, internet is still making a lot of progress in the area, so like I said, um, uh, if we could, uh, still get me a, a, a link to where I can, we can try to get shared out or put it on our Fa- on Facebook, on Marlboro County Facebook page, a link or something, so we'll know where they've gone and what our next step are, if, uh, if we can, that would still be good, so, uh, that's all I have.
Senator Johnson?
Thank you, Sheriff. Um, Ms. Bundy, thank you for your tireless work and what you have done for our county. Um, Ms. Lawson, always thank you for your tireless work, your tireless effort that gets sometimes unnoticed, but people are noticing the work that you put in on behalf of all of Marlboro County. Sheriff McMillan, thank you for the work that you continue to do, um, at Sheriff Department. Um, Mr. Franklin, thank you for coming and continuing to, to, to share your concerns about what's important, you know, for you and those, um, gentlemen who worked through the pandemic and who unfortunately were let go before the, um, pandemic money came in, um, and, and your continuous efforts not lying down here, you know, so continue to, to fight for what is rightfully, um, yours. Um, I want to make sure that, that there's a narrative that I want to address, um, that has painted me as this radical individual who is wanting to oust our administrator, to bring in another said administrator, to change the dynamics of Marlboro County, uh, and that's a false narrative. Anyone knows anything about me, since the age of fifteen years old, I've given my time, my expertise, my energy, my finances to Marlboro County. And a title is not going to change that effort. I love this county, and my efforts for this county is only to make it better. I have no ill will, no ulterior motives, no hidden agendas, no person in my back pocket, no shadow person guiding me, the law guides me. And I want to make sure that my fellow Marlboro County citizen understand that. If you hear something coming out of my mouth, it's for the betterment of not only myself, my kids, but your kids, your grandkids, your neighbors' kids, and everybody else. There doesn't need to be a change in Marlboro County. It needs to be a change. We can't continue to operate the way we operate and think we're going to be able to succeed in the future. We have to. Am I abrasive sometimes? Might be, but I'm passionate about the right changes coming to this county. And that's my only investment, and that's my only interest. I have no ill will towards anyone, no one. I have no interest in seeing anybody ousted or anybody lose. I want everybody to win, not just a few people in our county, everybody at the level that they can, and that's my investment in this position that I've been afforded to by my fellow citizen, is to work on their behalf, not to have any hidden motives or hidden agendas. So if you've heard a narrative about me, you know that is false. Read about me. Read about me. I have nothing to hide. I'm genuine about my efforts. I'm genuine about who I am. No ulterior motives, no hidden agendas, but to make Marlboro County the best that it can be. That's my only agenda. So anything that's contrary to that narrative is false. I don't have any problem with our county administrator, I don't have any problem with any of my council members. I want what's best for everybody in Marlboro County. And change is hard. We've been operating in the same condition for so long, that change is difficult. When you hear somebody coming with, with, with an elevated voice, it might seem like something, but just know that my only investment in running for this position and being afforded the opportunity to serve is to do just that, serve, not myself, not my interests, but the interest of the people. Um, Councilman Wood said about the basketball season, uh, was a, a, a good basketball season. Our kids competed at the highest level. Um, but it's obvious that some of those other areas have way more resources than, um, we have. And a lot of the kids were like, why don't we have this right here? We played at a beautiful facility in Sumter with multiple gyms, and the kids were like, you know, Coach, why don't we have this in our county? And one of the, um, persons was there, and he heard him, and he said, tell your council that we got this on penny tax from our taxpayers. He heard the kids talking about what we don't have in our county. And he was so interested in what those kids were saying that he just dropped it in all of the council members, that they just saw a coach out there talking to his kids, and that's what he said. Marlboro County, we have to invest, and invest wisely in our future. We can't continue to operate Marlboro County as it is, we have to grow it to where we expect it to be, that's how we get to where we want to go. I love this county, I love the people in it, I'm here for a reason. I'm here for a reason, not for my reason, but I'm here for the interest of all of Marlboro County, whether you're white, black, green, gray, I said it before, and I'm going to say it again, I have no ill will towards anyone, I'm a genuine, heart, God-fearing, Christ-centered person that know that there needs to be a change, and that knows that we can do that. And if we don't advocate for better, then we're not going to do that, that's my spirit, thank you.
All right. Councilman Blatman?
Yeah, I'd like to say that, you know, and I agree with Mr. Johnson, that I, you know, Dr. Johnson, I, I thank you for sharing that with us too, you know, because, uh, I think all these ideas together can, can help, and, um, you know, I, I want to build it for the county too, not just my district, but the whole county, you know, and, you know, the county has done a lot of things, I think, and, uh, I've said it before, and I, I know there's a lot that needs to be done, we've had the pandemic and everything, um, things have been tougher the last two years than normal, but, uh, you know, we're getting back on schedule and things are starting to, to look good, of course, and, you know, I just want us all to work together and just do the right thing, uh, for Marlboro County. And if we all do that, then, you know, we've all done our job, we've all done our job, you know, and I, you know, I agree, I don't want no ill will towards anybody or anything, uh, the main thing is, is keep the county as a whole in your heart at best interest. And then, you know, I think the whole county's fine, the council people are fine, you know, and we've, we've all worked together good, um, you know, we have, and, uh, I'm proud of that over the years, I mean, we, we have, and, um, we've had good meetings, um, it hasn't been like some of the other ones, uh, you know, with, some districts, you know, that, I won't call any names, but we, we've had good meetings and, uh, good results came out of it, and, uh, you know, I'm proud, I'm proud of that. And, uh, I want to thank Ms. Bundy for everything you've done, I, I'm going to miss you, everybody's going to miss you. I want to thank Ms. Sumter for everything you do, you, you do a lot, of course, and, uh, we thank you for that, thank you, Sheriff, thank you for helping us with the maps and all too. You know, I just, like I said, we, uh, we just got to work together to, to make it a better place, that's all.
Councilman?
Ms. Patricia, thank you for everything you've done, and good luck in your new, uh, uh, responsibility still with the county, something I think you've wanted to do, and , uh, you got the opportunity, and I think it's going to be great. Um, Ms. Purley, thank you for all you've done for many, many years for this county, always there to help in, in any way you can. Sheriff, appreciate you, Ms. Doris, and really all the county employers for everything y'all do to, uh, try and do the work that the people of this county want, you know, and I think that's to be commended, all the county employers, Mr. Mullin, county administrator. Uh, McCall will have a Mayfest this year, I haven't got the exact date, but it will be coming up probably about the first weekend in May, and when I get the date, I'll let you know. Back to the, uh, District fifty-four, fifty-five, uh, issue. The people in McCall are very, very upset with Ms. Pat Henigan, our House member. She said on that committee in Columbia, she had sole power to keep this county whole like we've been for a long time. Thirty-one years ago, Senator Jack Lenzey died, we had the strongest congressional district in the state out of forty-six counties. And over the years, bits and pieces, we, this county's been picked apart, you know, our, our House districts have changed, the Senate district changed, the world, I think at one time, we had three senators representing us and stuff, but now I think Mr. Malloy, he does represent most of all the county, I think. But that House district, you know... you know, if you look at that map, one little circle with about three thousand people around McCall is all that was drawn out of this county. Ms. Henigan let this county be split up so she could pick up some rural areas in Sheraw and Darlington County. Basically, she picked up everything in Darlington County and Chesterfield County and traded off the north, northern corner of Marlborough County, which is the town of McCall. People over there are very, very upset, but you know, there's nothing we can do about it, because that's for ten years. For the next ten years, the town of McCall, basically, the whole McCall area is going to be in Jackie Hayden's district right now, in Dillon County. And we think that, my opinion, as Chairman of the Republican Party in a district that votes seventy-five percent Republican, that's my opinion why it was done. Now, she may have a reason. I haven't seen any reason why she explained and just drew one little circle around the town of McCall. But I know for a fact, four elections in a row, the town of McCall has voted seventy-five percent across the board Republican. So I'll let the people of this county make their mind up why it was done. Or maybe she can come forward, as she's been asked by several people, why she did it. I haven't seen a reason yet why she did. Why would she split our county up and pick up some areas of Chesterfield and Darlington? But anyway, that's, that's my spiel. Very upset about it. People in McCall are very upset. But, you know, she's, she's got it for the next ten years, or this district's going to be split up like that for at least the next ten years, when the next consensus comes up. Appreciate everything everybody does with the county. You know, we just got a great bunch of people working, and we got a great community, great county. And it's just, we just need to keep doing what we're doing.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank my fellow councilmen for the support y'all give me, and showed me the past two weeks. And since our last meeting, I think we're working really strong together. And we're pulling together as a team, and we're going to get some stuff done. I share Dr. Johnson's passion, and we just want the best for the county and the people here. And I'd like to congratulate Anthony Woods and Dr. Johnson on the successful basketball season. And thank you for offering your time as a coach. And that, that's a big commitment. And that is such a needed position in this community. I'd like to tell Ms. Bundy that we're going to miss you, that you served us well, and good luck on your future endeavors. Sheriff McNeil, thank you for coming and stating the status of the department. Pearl, thank you for your words tonight. And let's continue working together, guys, and getting the good work done. Moving on to adjournment, do we have a motion?
Not ready.
Okay.
I need to say this. I wasn't going to say anything. But when we get up here as councilmen and women, we, we have to work with our legislators, whether we're chairman of a party or not, we have to work with these people. We should not get up and call names and put people out like that. Ms. Henigan, Representative Henigan, husband was in cancer treatment the day that that vote was taken, okay? She did not fail Marlborough County. She was obligated. So whether you are Republican or Democrat, you know, you have your own opinion. You go to the poll, you vote. But as Marlborough County councilmen, or council people, keep your politics to yourself. And I'm going to leave that.
Okay, is there any motion to adjourn?
So move on.
In a second?
In a second.
All right, all in favor? Let's stand adjourned.